I think we're ready. We're all here. Okay, terrific. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. So nice to see everyone. It's Thursday, February 25th. It's my pleasure to make a motion for us to go back into public session. If I could ask someone to please second. Thank you, Julia. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. Thank you and welcome to our community. And if everybody would please join us as is our custom by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Terrific. Thank you very much. Tonight, we are really looking forward to an overview of the superintendent's proposed budget. And we also are grateful that we have an opportunity to hear about the continuation of operations plan in the event of public health emergency in response to state mandate. And with the board's permission, before we turn our attention to those presentations and discussions, I'd like to suggest that we first turn our attention to an item in the consent agenda, which is item 12.06. And I'm going to turn it over briefly to Andrew, please. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much, Marjorie. And we're just waiting for a guest to join us here on the screen. There he is. Welcome, Dr. Aliva. Nice to see you.
Nice to see everyone. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Nice to see you.
And Dr. Aliva is here tonight because I am thrilled to be recommending him to our board for appointment as our next Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, with a start date of June 21st, 2021. We first met Neil in early January and have spent a lot of time with him since then, putting him through a rigorous hiring process, getting to know him well, and giving him a chance, I hope, to get to know our district and us a little bit also. And through that time and also through all the reference checking that we did, we have come to know Neil as a very thoughtful leader. It's abundantly clear that he's someone who cares deeply about children, about school, and about supporting all the adults who work in school. When you ask him about his work, he talks, among other things, about care and compassion and relationships and trust and joy. And these are great priorities for someone who will work in human resources. So I think that we will be most fortunate to have Neil join our team. He is currently the principal of the Mamaroneck Avenue School in the Mamaroneck School District and has been there in that role since 2018. He was previously the assistant principal at the same school and prior to that spent 15 years as a teacher in New York City Public Schools. He earned his doctorate in organizational leadership and education from Northeastern University, his master's degree in education from St. John's University, and his bachelor's degree in psychology from Temple University. And it truly is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Aliva to our Board of Education for appointment this evening.
Thank you so much, Andrew. It's my pleasure to move the resolution before us. We have a resolution 12.06. If I could please ask for a second. Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Aliva. We're gonna pause for a brief discussion. I'd just like to say it was a pleasure to meet you. Couple of weeks back, we're delighted that you're here with us tonight, and thank you. We'll go ahead and vote. And then certainly, if you'd like to say a few words, we would be delighted, but not to put you on the spot. If you prefer not to, that's also fine. So may I ask my board colleagues to please vote on the resolution? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Terrific. Welcome to Katona-Louisboro. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's very, very flattering. I'm completely beyond words here. Just a couple of words. I just thank you so much for the flattering introduction and the flattering words to, from Andrew and the entire board. And thank you for the opportunity. At every step of the interview process, I became more and more impressed with the Katona-Louisboro leadership, the board educators, the students, the parents. And I'm just thrilled beyond words to become part of this outstanding community. So thank you again, and I truly look forward to meeting you all in person very soon.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Terrific. Okay, thank you so much. And then that brings us back toward the beginning of our agenda, where we have an opportunity for some board announcements. Did anybody have announcements this evening? Yes, Terrence, please.
So I want to say kudos to Meadow Pond Elementary School. I got a chance to watch the big 1-0. My kids don't go to Meadow Pond, but we have friends who go there and I was blown away. I thought it was awesome. It was really awesome. And it really just kind of surpassed my expectations. And I thought it was really creative. It was well-produced. And the students just gave it their all. And, you know, my wife was crying when the students were kind of taking their bows and the parents were giving flowers. You know, during these times, to still be able to put together such a production and to have that unity and to bring students together with the faculty and the staff to help them. It's really a testament to the work. So I was just, I was so happy to, to kind of just see that product as, as a result of all that hard work. You know, another comment that is, you know, maybe not as, as positive or as lighthearted, but I want to, you know, say this in public, and I made similar comments at the Equity and Racial Justice Group last night. But, you know, this week, one year ago this week, Ahmaud Arbery was killed while he was jogging through his neighborhood. And there's been an incredible surge in anti-Asian violence around the country as well. And there might be some who might ask, well, why are you bringing that up here for the Katona-Louisboro Board of Education? And I'll tell you why. Part of the Equity and Racial Justice work that we've been doing, you know, one of the primary sensibilities has been, how do we disrupt and dismantle kind of inequitable structures in our society, right? And I think it's too easy for many communities around the country, especially communities like ours, that have a lot of, you know, benefits and luxuries that other communities might not. It's easy for us to look away. It's easier for someone like me to look away, and I have, and I've been able to conveniently forget about terrible things that happen in society. And so one of the things that I pledge personally and professionally is to, you know, be more accountable, to be more engaged. And so if I can, you know, just say some words and make people aware, and hopefully, you know, that gets passed on to others. It gets passed on to teachers. It gets passed on to administrators, to parents and families. We got to talk about these things. And especially for our students of color, where they are, they are in the minority, and they may not have folks around them who will talk about these things. But let's not think for a second that they're not impacted by it. Let's not think for a second that they don't see and hear and feel. And so I think it's important for us to be able to represent even challenging and difficult content and stuff like this that's happening in our world because it's important for them to be able to process it. And it's important for us as a district, as educators and leaders, to be able to lead by example and help them process it as, even as we're helping to process it ourselves. So we can't stick our heads in the sand. What happens in the real world and the big world, it happens in our world too, and it's all meaningful. So I'll stop there. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Terrence. We appreciate your reminders and your perspective. Thank you. Yes, Rory.
On a lighter note, but I do appreciate your comments, Terrence. Thank you for pointing that out. And I know you and Natalie and others on the ERJ team are doing great work. I just wanted to provide a quick update because we spent the last, maybe not the last meeting, but two before that, discussing sports and safety of winter sports and so on. And so I'm quite close to at least one of the sports, being ice hockey. And I know that all of the appropriate protocols are being implemented and that the varsity team is underway. They're actually 2-0. They won both their first games against some pretty stiff competition. But all of the safety protocols are being enforced. Parents are not going anywhere near the rink. And the boys are behaving themselves on the bus and wearing their masks and everything seems appropriate. I also just want to give a shout out to the girls bowling team who completed their regular season 8-0 and are heading off into regionals. I think the boys did very well too at 6-2. The basketball team is doing very well, the boys' basketball team. And so just all in all, I think there's a lot of delight that winter sports are going ahead. And I know we really deliberated a lot over whether it was appropriate to do that or not. And I think it was the right call and things seem to be going quite smoothly. So hopefully, there's no outbreaks of any kind. So far, so good. Thanks.
Thank you, Rory. Another announcement. I had just a few short announcements. I wanted to start by thanking the middle school PTO and Mr. Swayadawitz for hosting what was, I think, a pretty courageous conversation in the middle school around utilization of social media. Parents were invited to watch The Social Dilemma, which I guess is on Netflix. That's where I saw it. I don't know if it's available anyplace else. It's at least available on Netflix. And Mr. Swayadawitz facilitated a really important conversation with parents who clearly are very concerned about their children's use of social media and more broadly utilization of phones and devices, maybe an intensifying concern in pandemic times. So I thought it was timely and a helpful starting point, probably for future conversations around the district. And felt very grateful that the faculty-parent panel that has happened for the past several years in the John Jay Middle School Library was basically reimagined for Zoom. And it was a nice way to build community and bring parents together. So thank you for that. And then I also just wanted to thank Town of Louisboro for the past couple of years. Michael Portnoy and Dana Maklin have hosted a new neighbors gathering, which also has been reimagined for Zoom, and the board was included. And we really appreciate being included. We were able to meet with new neighbors. I think there were six or seven couples, families, I should say, on Zoom. And several of them have young children and they're in our schools or they're coming to our schools. They're really excited to be here. And it was just really nice to see new young families moving in and to be able to welcome them and to represent the school district. So we really appreciate being included in that. And then just panning out a little more broadly, I also wanted to really thank our state legislators, who in the past two weeks have made themselves available very generously with their time. In particular, Shelley Mayer, Pete Harkum, and Chris Burdick have met with us not only in panel discussion formats with school districts across Westchester and Putnam County, but also in very small intimate group settings where we've had the opportunity to speak with them directly. And in ordinary times, we would really be focused on the governor's budget. And we did spend quite a bit of time on issues related to budget. But honestly, I would say that conversation was eclipsed by concern and some frustration and seeking of clarification related to state health national guidance around opportunities to reopen or to provide additional in-person learning. And I really just want to provide a note of reassurance. And I don't know if this causes any hopefulness for you, Terrence. It's not directly related to what you were speaking to. But it really was heartening to see how dedicated our very local elected officials are to public education. And it was heartening. They definitely understand the complexity of the problems, the challenges that we're facing, and they really do want to help, even if solutions are not obvious or self-evident. So I really thank them on behalf of the district and Westchester-Putnam County schools more broadly. I think that's all that I had. And if nobody else has an announcement, then we would love to hear from you tonight, Andrew, please. Thank you. You're muted, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you. One of these days, we won't be saying that anymore to each other. So as Marjorie mentioned a short while ago tonight, much of our focus will be on updating our safety plan and then a great deal of attention tonight as we begin to introduce our 2122 school year budget. Spent tonight, time on that tonight and again on Saturday. But I know tonight, there's also significant interest in our community about what the next few months of school might look like for our students. Hopefully, everyone is aware that I'm hosting a superintendent's coffee next Wednesday, March 3rd, with a focus on that same topic. The invitation and the Zoom link for the coffee went out on Tuesday. I'll send a reminder in the next couple of days. And community members are invited to submit questions in advance to our email address for that purpose, which is questions@klschools.org. It's very helpful to get the questions in advance. If you can possibly do that, we can do a better job answering them on the night. And it's, it's completely understandable, of course, that parents would be hoping for more information and for change in the near future. The pandemic has been with us an entire year now. We've read and heard more than we ever wanted to about the many different ways that this virus has impacted us, the physical and mental toll it has taken, and of course, the tragic loss of life across the country. And closest to us and to our work is the incredible impact it has had on school and on how we support our students. And I do want to be as clear as possible that we all want to see all children back in school as soon as safely possible. I'm very much aware of the conversations that are taking place in other districts in our region. I'm in meetings at least three times a week with the Westchester and Lower Hudson superintendents. And the pace of those conversations about returning more children to school has picked up since the CDC issued its new guidance on February 12th, which is just a little less than two weeks ago. I'm impressed by the thoughtfulness and the nuance of the new CDC guidance. It clearly recognizes the importance of school and of children being in school. And it gives schools the ability to make different decisions based on the particular circumstances and context in which those schools operate. The circumstances are, of course, not identical across the country, and so I'm glad that the guidance provides that leeway. But it's also important to note that regardless of CDC guidance, we here in KLSD are obligated to follow the guidance from the New York State Department of Health and Department of Education. And that guidance hasn't changed since last summer. And perhaps key in that guidance, which I'm sure many are aware, it's been talked about in local media recently, key in that guidance is the requirement that schools either adhere strictly to six-foot distancing or the use of barriers. We must follow that guidance, and all Westchester districts have followed that guidance throughout the school year. And since September, all have maintained the six-foot distance. And that's why there has been some variation among the number of students districts have been able to bring to school each day because of space and staffing availability. There are districts that since September have been able to bring more children to school than KLSD has, and there are districts that have brought fewer children to school each day. I know, though, from meetings so regularly with my superintendent colleagues, that we all share the goal of bringing as many students as we can into school as safely and as often as we possibly can. But in the last week or two, as the number of positive cases in the county has begun to drop, thankfully, and as vaccinations have become more available to school employees, and as we look to the warmer weather of the spring, the conversations have begun to shift. And districts are looking towards that other option to use barriers if they need them to go below six feet to bring more children back to school. And we have begun to have these same complicated conversations in our district that are happening in other districts. They are conversations about class size, about space, furniture, lunches, supervision, staffing, buses, and scheduling. There is a lot to think through. And next week's coffee is a part of that conversation, and I hope many in our community will join it. The community's voice is an incredibly important part of this conversation. As soon as that coffee is over, I'll be sending a new survey to our community to gather, to gather once again, as we have throughout the year, information about the intentions of our families, the numbers of students who would plan to come back to school if six-foot distancing is relaxed, will be a very important part of our decision-making. So, so please do, whether you can join the coffee next week or not, I please ask all our families to watch for additional communication in the coming weeks. Fortunately, we'll be meeting with our board frequently through the month of March, so I expect to share more information with our board members very soon. And then update our community soon after that on our thinking and our planning. And Marjorie, that's the focus of my update tonight.
Thank you very much, Andrew. We really appreciate that. I'll pause here. I'm not sure whether board members had any comments or clarifying questions on what Andrew has shared. While you're gathering your thoughts, I'll also just mention that we're about to turn our attention to the first presentation item, which is the addendum to our district's safety plan. After that, we'll move into the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget and also into a more detailed review of several pages of the budget. After that, we have opportunity for public forum. And I know we are joined tonight by many members of the community. So we invite you to please join us during the public forum by using the Q and A. We ask that you please consider holding off until we get close to the public forum in the event that we've already answered your question in the course of our conversation over the next two presentations. And then when we're ready for Q and A, we would love to hear your concerns and questions at that time. With that, any board members want to ask a question of what we heard so far from Andrew? If not, we can continue with our agenda. Okay, I think we're ready. So I'm going to turn it either back to you, Andrew, or over to you, Donnell, please.
I think we'll go right to Donnell for this, for the safety plan update.
Terrific. Thank you. So joining us is Lisa Herligh. She's the School Business Administrator, new to the district as of August. And Lisa will be presenting tonight the addendum to the district-wide safety plan. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, Donnell, and thank you, everyone, for having me this evening. I'll get right into this because I know there's a lot on the agenda this evening. Share my screen. Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes, great. Thank you.
So I am here tonight to present on the addendum to the district's safety plan. This is a mandated public hearing followed by a 30-day public comment period as required by Project Save. This plan must be adopted by April 1. As you know, I'm sure you're all aware, Project Save Act recognizes that learning cannot take place in unsafe environment. Parents want to be assured that their children are in a safe place. SAVE Act requires a school district to define how school districts will respond to acts of violence and other disasters through prevention, intervention, and emergency response management. Due to a recent amendment to education law, I'm sorry for not advancing this slides. Excuse me, sorry about that. Due to recent amendment to education law 2801A regarding pandemic planning, districts are required to adopt a continuation of operations plan in the event that the governor declares a public health emergency involving communicable disease. This plan is an addendum to the district-wide safety plan and is required to include protocols for responding to a declared public health emergency involving a communicable disease that are substantially consistent with provisions of labor law. Districts officials may actually, we've included parts relevant content from our district reopening plan. The operations plan must include a list and description of positions and titles considered essential in the event of a state-ordered reduction in in-person workforce. Essentialists shall refer to a designation made that a public employee or contractor is required to be physically present at a work site to perform his or her job. Further protocols the employer will follow in order to enable all non-essential employees and contractors to telecommute or work remotely. Staggering work shifts of essential employees and contractors and further procurement and provision of PPE, which would be based upon tasks and needs in a quantity sufficient to provide at least two pieces of each type of PPE, mask and gloves in this case, to each essential employee and contractor during a given work shift over at least a six-month period. Further, the plan must include protocols in the event of known, of a known case of the disease or an individual exhibits symptoms of the disease. The protocols shall not violate any existing federal, state, or local law regarding sick leave or health information privacy and must include detailed actions to immediately and thoroughly disinfect the work area, common area surface, and shared equipment, and the employer policy on available leave in the event of the need of an employee to receive testing, treatment, isolation, or quarantine. Further, protocols to aid in the tracking of disease and to identify exposed employees by documenting precise work hours, work locations, including off-site visits for essential employees and contractors. And lastly, identifying sites for emergency housing for essential employees. So that is an overview of what the addendum includes. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you for joining us and for developing the addendum, for bringing it to our attention. So this, this remains available to the public for 30 days? Is that, do I have that correct?
Yes. So open for a 30-day public comment period. Yes.
And then we adopt it after that period of time? Okay, thank you.
What is meant by the last slide there? It said emergency housing?
So emergency housing, I guess essentially if people were need to stay overnight. So what we had drafted is that we could use, for example, cots and such that are available in nurses' offices and then, or nearby hotels. But just depending on the type of, of pandemic, hopefully, there will not be another one. The type of pandemic is just to have that in case anyone does need to stay overnight, essential employees, that is.
Okay. So the addendum is just about a communicable disease, nothing, not?
Correct. Really, what we're doing is really almost codifying what's already been established in our reopening plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further question or comment? We really appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, Rory. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was just going to comment. I mean, it feels to me like this addendum required that we document who is and who isn't an essential worker. And my question, Lisa, is really just whether we had already done that, or did this addendum sort of drive us to think anew or to put down in writing maybe what we'd already known about who is and who isn't essential? Was that, was that a big part of the challenge in putting it together?
Um, yes, Rory, I think that you'd be correct. I think that was drawn out as a result of the pandemic of who became essential, who we needed to be in person, and who could work remotely. So those specific titles. And then also, what would we need for people to effectively and efficiently be able to work remotely? So basically, we were putting down on paper what we found out in the last year.
Right. That's helpful. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa, for all the hard work you put into this. And Lisa will be joining us a little bit later, presenting some of the budget pages as well tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Lisa. Thank you, Donnell.
You're welcome.
Terrific. And I think we're ready to move on for the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sharing my screen, am I?
Oh.
Or should I?
I thought you were, but I can share my screen.
Okay.
Like, just give me a moment.
I couldn't. If it's easier, I can do it.
Yeah, I can do it.
All right. Well, I'll just, I'll start while Well, I'll just I'll start while we're getting the screen up with a few opening comments. It's it's pretty remarkable to think about the fact that exactly a year ago at this time, we were presenting a budget with no idea what the rest of the year would hold, what the coming year would hold. And that we developed a budget for the school year that we're in as if it were to be any other school year and we've made do and done the best we possibly can for our students within the constraints of that budget. Uh as we now look to next year's budget.
Are you guys seeing that? I just want to make sure.
We're seeing it. We're seeing it.
A double screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think this is the presenter's view.
Right.
Is that better?
That's good. That's it.
Great. Thanks.
So um the first, the first point I want to draw out about the development of this year's of next year's budget is we've really uh put a lot of consideration to the fact that how dramatically different things have been. And the unknowns that still exist have made it quite complicated to develop this coming budget, but we'll talk more about that as we go through it. So let's move through these first few slides. We come right to the learning commitment that remains a very important part of our work regardless of the the way in which we're working, whether we're in high rate or remote or hopefully soon back in person. We will always work to develop engaging and relevant experiences for our students and to make them be as active as possible. So we don't lose sight of that even when the circumstances become so dramatically different. We go to the next slide. I think we come to the board goals. I do want to draw particular attention here to the board's goal of fostering an inclusive and welcoming environment because that's so much in line now with the work that we here repeatedly referenced around equity, diversity, and inclusion. That welcoming environment language, in fact, is in the states now a direction to us when we when it talks about building culturally responsive sustaining frameworks for education. So I think the board should feel very proud of that goal. And as we move to the next goal, we come to the one that's most relevant to the work and development of the budget that we'll be talking about tonight. We certainly do uh think and hope that the board will agree that we've developed a budget that is fiscally responsible. We are presenting a budget tonight that falls within the tax cap as we have in prior years. Uh even though it does provide us with quite a bit of flexibility to plan for whatever the coming months and year may bring us. Moving on to the next slide, uh the budget is a lengthy development process. So I'm going to give a lot of thanks tonight to Donnell and Lisa, who you just met, and to the rest of our business office, but also to all of our principals and directors and other administrators and leaders throughout teacher leaders throughout the district who have all been a help through all the months that you see represented here on the screen in thinking about what's necessary and what's needed uh for the coming year's budget. We always start from scratch. Uh and we always think about what do we truly need uh in order to appropriately serve our students in the coming year? So and that gets us to where we are now, uh just the beginning now of the new process with the board. This slide, uh which is one that we traditionally had, uh is an enrollment slide to show the trends over time. And certainly, most of our audience will be familiar with the fact that over a little bit more than a 10 year period, there was a pretty significant dip in our population. You see it represented in that middle box there where we showed that from two thousand ten eleven to twenty twenty one, we had a drop in enrollment of a little bit over twenty three percent, a very significant drop. What we do want to point out here tonight, though, is if we now look at these four year period, including next year's projections, we're looking at a decrease of one point nine percent. So obviously, a much smaller decrease. If you if you extrapolated that four year period into the twelve years that are on the screen here, it would be a decrease of just under six percent instead of the much more significant decrease than we in fact did experience. So we'd like to think that that indicates a leveling off and perhaps a change of direction. It's still a little bit soon to know for certain what's going to come next, but it does seem to it does indicate a change from the from the down from the decline of those prior years. Moving on to the next slide, now we come to the budget itself. You see here the current year budget of a hundred and eleven million dollars, four hundred seventy two thousand six hundred and eighty. And then right below it, the budget that we're going to be speaking to you about in the days and weeks ahead. Proposing a budget of a hundred and thirteen million, two hundred forty two thousand eight hundred and eighty. An increase of one million, seven hundred seventy thousand, two hundred dollars per percentage increase of one point five nine percent from this year's budget to next year's budget. Moving forward, we get we show two slides here. This first slide is the one that we've shown you for a number of years, the the drivers that make up a typical school budget, school programs. Whether those are new programs or refining programs, professional learning, enrollment, class size, and infrastructure. But as I mentioned earlier, things are a bit different and a bit more complicated at the moment. So the budget drivers this year, we have a lot more contingent thinking and planning since we don't know at the moment whether social distancing will still be a fact of life uh in September of twenty one. But we want to be prepared for it. If it is, we 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 don't want our community to think that we would be satisfied to have the same uh entirely the same experience in a socially distanced environment as we had this year. We would always want to be improving. So this budget contains funds where we think we could provide a stronger experience with with more students in person on a regular basis, even if we were still in a socially distanced environment. And then we've also made plans. If that's not the case, we've begun to think about what's it going to take and what's it going to mean for all of our students when they are able to return to school full time? We don't assume that it's just going to be like flipping a switch and everything goes back to normal as it once was. We don't think it would be uh right or reasonable to think that way at all. We think there's going to be, there's going to need to be significant support and new kinds of work and new kinds of engagement. We're going to want our students to be happy to come back to school, to be comfortable back in school, to feel well supported academically back in school after a very disruptive and extended disruptive experience. So we've again, we have money in the budget uh in a in a much more kind of flexible way than we've had in the past so that we could put it towards these needs. Whichever needs they are. Again, things are unfolding rapidly uh as they have throughout the past year. So we uh we hope for certain types of change in the coming weeks and months, but we're also prepared for other kinds of change uh if that should happen to. And then there's as uh sorry, but uh just go back one more slide. Sorry, then there's there's uh that's got this budget there for curriculum instruction, professional learning. As there always is, enrollment class size are a significant drivers of the budget, and there is infrastructure work to be done too. So now we'll go forward and go into more detail. Here's the the section on contingent planning, which I've mentioned a little bit. In the event of social distancing remain remains, we have funding for contingent staffing. This year, during the crisis, some staff were necessarily reallocated to reduce population density. The funding in next year's budget supports those same staff in their primary functions. Uh so we know that we had to, for example, take certain positions and put them into secondary spaces in our elementary school so that we could bring in kindergarten and first grade and second grade and still have them in every day. But some of those people were now not doing things that they would otherwise be doing. So next year, we have funds in there to be sure that those people can do what their intended uh instructional role would be. And then uh it supports additional staff so that we can maximize in person learning in the spaces that we have available. Should social distancing remain a necessity? And then, as I mentioned before, in the next bullet, in the event that social distancing is reduced, this budget would support staffing for additional academic resources for all students as well as programming to support for all students as they return full time uh through social emotional learning. Perhaps we we imagine some new extracurricular activities that would engage more students in their in their life back at school so that they can readjust as best possible back to school. Curriculum, instruction, professional learning, all of these things will be very important as we move forward, following all the disruptions and the significant changes that we had to make on very short notice last spring. You know, we've as as is true across the country, we overhauled what learning looks like on very short order. We never, we we never would have made change on that kind of scale in such a short timeframe had it not been for a national or a global health crisis. So the the funding here and these bullet points are in are not in a particular order. They're all important to us. But what we're thinking here is that we we're going to need time to reflect and to think about what has made sense in the changes that we've made to make sure that we're thinking carefully about what's working well. Not to assume that we simply keep moving forward uh in the ways we have, you know, think about things that we put in place quickly, Schoology, laptops and other devices all across the district for all of our students very quickly. All new kinds of software at all levels that students are using. We're confident that some of those things have worked well and have supported us well through this crisis. But we don't, we don't take that assumption forward and and assume that when we're all back in school full time, those are necessarily the best things for us to be doing. So we have funding here in various categories. You see it in technology, in science, education, sustainability, support for learners, race equity, inclusion work, social emotional learning. We we know how important it'll be to keep learning in all of those areas as we move forward. And then, as noted, uh these are some of there's there's one new position here at the top, which is an additional school psychologist to serve as a CSE chairperson, CSE evaluator. Our three uh administrative folks in these uh who run the meetings at the moment. Our director of special services and our two assistant directors of special services facilitate, I think, a little bit more than a thousand meetings a year among the three of them. Obviously, an enormous undertaking. Uh and this position allows uh would would then would give us another person to facilitate those meetings and thereby freeing up those administrators who would would still be hosting many meetings themselves, but would also now have some time to devote to other types of work that are very important in terms of overseeing the program, supporting change and new initiatives, observing and supporting colleagues throughout the district so that we can make sure that we're all doing the best work we can. So that's one new position that's in the budget. Below it, we're just talking there about the staffing that we typically ask for the district to support, and you'll see more much more detail about this later on so that we can have favorable class sizes throughout the district. And for a number of years, we've asked the board to support these contingency positions. Uh and we're keeping these ones separate from what we might call the COVID contingency positions. These are ones that in a more traditional sense, if we have an influx in enrollment at the last minute, or depending on course selections at our secondary schools, these positions will help us to make sure that we can provide the offerings that students sign up for and to make sure the class size stays favorable even as enrollment might fluctuate. And this this might well be a year in which enrollment might fluctuate a little bit more than it has in prior years because of uh family movement that we've all read about during the pandemic. And then we talk about infrastructure. And what we want to point out here, because we know that some of the bullet points below will look familiar from last year's budget presentation. It was absolutely necessary as we went into the pandemic through the spring of last year to reprioritize some of the infrastructure work that we were doing. We had to put a lot of work towards ventilation, uh understandably, and I think uh very appropriately. It was work that would have been on the horizon. Anyway, we accelerated it and put funding towards it that might otherwise have gone to some of the projects that you see here on the screen today. We also, the board knows that upcoming very soon is a five year capital improvement presentation. We anticipate that that uh presentation from our architect will help us to understand other infrastructure projects that are necessary in the buildings in the coming years. So there is money in the budget to support the ongoing maintenance and improvement of our facilities throughout the district. Now we move to enrollments and I'll turn over to Alice Cronin. Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. I don't turn around. My mistake.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not yet.
Sorry, not yet. We're not at staffing yet. Still me. All right. So now we're looking at our uh traditional enrollment slides, but although the first one right off the bat is a non traditional one because we haven't seen this before. So this is these are the remote learning sections that we built this year, and you heard me say earlier about having to reallocate some staff. So this is some of the ways in which it happened. The uh the students represented on this slide, total of a hundred and thirty three that you see at the bottom, come from across all three of our elementary schools. And importantly, this slide impacts all the slides, the three slides that come after it for the three elementary schools. So we wanted the board to see how we had to collapse some sections this year uh in order to accommodate those students uh who chose their families who chose to have them stay home entirely. Uh and this was complicated. The numbers would fluctuate a little bit through the year as we gave families opportunity to make changes. But we wanted to make sure that we could support these students well. So you see eight, eight staff members were allocated towards these students so that we could provide them an experience while they were home. And then, as we move forward, you see here, uh we've for several years now, we've pulled out kindergarten enrollment when we make projections because we have found that we can project a little bit more accurately when we we always say that kindergarten is the hardest grade to project, obviously, because the students are not yet in the district. So we feel a little bit more comfortable projecting it as one number across all three schools rather than trying to break it down by schools. So you see there uh current enrollment of a hundred ninety seven, next year projected to be two hundred and one. We have, we we're showing one additional section of kindergarten. In fact, we had budgeted for eleven sections in last year's budget. We ended up not needing those eleven, so that's why you see ten. So it's it's budget neutral, but but on this slide, it looks like an increase of one section to manage the projected kindergarten enrollment. Now we move into those more traditional elementary slides, but again, I want to point out, and you can see it down there in the purple number at the bottom, sixty six students who were remote this year, and some of those sections may have come from the sections above. So we're looking here at Increase Miller. It it may well be that that forty five number of students showing in first grade was a higher number earlier in the year, at the beginning of the year, or before, sorry, I should say before the year began. Perhaps it had four sections allocated to it. And then we collapsed and may have put a section towards remote learners that came from all three schools. So it's it's complicated this year, but we always encourage the board to look on the diagonal. But in in other words, look at this year's first grade at Increase Miller and compare it to next year's second grade. And typically, you'll see fairly consistent numbers, and typically, you'll see fairly consistent sections. That's going to be different this year, and that's important for the board and the community to understand. Again, because we're not showing remote sections next year. Doesn't mean that might not become an eventuality, and that's one of the reasons it's complicated. But for now, at least, we're showing traditional sections, traditional numbers. But if we look, let's say, at the second of the second grade, it looks like a good example, sixty three students and three sections next year, seventy nine and four sections. I'm thinking that it's not that we're expecting sixteen new students to arrive in that grade level. It's that some of those students are incorporated into that sixty six that you see down at the bottom. I hope that's makes sense to to folks. So you see, you know, you now you look at the right side, you see the projected numbers. You see the staffing allocated and you see the average class sizes. But you see if Increase Miller, we go to the next slide. I won't spend as much time. It's the same concept. You see thirty five students from Katona Elementary who were in remote sections this year, not reflected. But if you look at the total for the school population in grades one through five, you see a pretty consistent population for the school from this year to next year. I hope this is making sense to folks. And then finally, we get to Metapon. Again, you see a pretty consistent number at the bottom. You'll see more fluctuation if you look just at the individual grades again, because it's not including those thirty two remote students at Metapon. So we think we have good staffing in the elementary schools for those numbers. We come to the middle school. Middle school uh does does grow a bit next year, as you can see in the total at the bottom. You see the projections there. It's sixth grade that grows quite significantly, seventh grade gets a little bit smaller, eighth grade gets a little bit smaller. So the overall, there's the growth and most of that growth is in sixth grade. That'll be reflected in some of the uh staffing numbers later on. And then you can see the class sizes, high school and and at the secondary schools. We always point out that the numbers that where you see uh the projected class size for the sections, we these are very much averages. We know that based on uh the selections that students make, some classes will be larger, some classes will be smaller. But nonetheless, these are the averages of the class sizes that we're looking at. And you can see that the projected uh overall enrollment at the high school, a little bit lower than this year. But again, you see growth in some grades. The ninth grade gets larger at the high school next year, and then some grades get smaller to balance it out. That takes us on, and now we come to staffing changes and I'll turn over to Alex.
Thank you, Andrew.
Sure.
Um, okay. So when we look here at the staffing changes, these are the classroom changes that we're looking at for next year. And you see on the second line down, we have the ad of a psychologist in the request. And Catherine McNulty will talk on Saturday a little more about the rationale, and I know Andrew started to talk about that. Then you see in each of the Then you see in each of the core subjects reductions. These are shared across the middle school and the high school, and they're based on the enrollment and student core selection. So this is how we project. That our staffing needs will play out. And then the last one that says specials, that is actually, sorry, elementary music also based on the number of sections we are projecting. When you do go to the next slide, these changes actually have mostly already taken place with support staff. So if you look and you say, well, how are they reducing, you know, three teaching assistants and five teacher aides? From budget to budget, that's the reduction. But on this slide, unlike the one we were just on, these people are not with the organization anymore. They retired during the summer or something changed. And so this isn't taking a resource from students who are currently in programs. They're actually positions that we're not using now. The O and M reduction, we had two retirements. And Paul Christensen is only planning on replacing one of the positions. And the transportation fraction that you see really had to do with a custodian bus driver who's now exclusively in operations and maintenance. So it's that fractional piece. And then you can see at the bottom, the total reduction is a little over 12 possessions.
So now we get into the section of the budget of speaking about budget analysis. In this section, I'll speak of the terms budget to budget, tax cap, tax levy and tax rate. So as Andrew had indicated before, we will, the budget tonight being presented is a $1,770,200 increase or 1.59% increase from the previous year's budget. This slide shows an average of six years history of budget. So you can see that the average budget to budget change over what's represented on the slide is 0.28%. And then the average tax levy change reflected on this slide is an increase of 0.10%. I did look up some prior years today and a quick look back to 2013, 14, which is not represented on this slide. Shows the highest budget at 114,879,543. And during that year, the tax levy was 102,781,072. So this slide shows some of our budget increases. You'll see salary and benefits on the aggregate of those two represent $1,806,855. Then next operations and maintenance exclusive of salaries, because those are in those two, two lines above have an increase of $151,115. Then pupil service and instructional computers that represents special education guidance, social workers, psychologists. And that is set to increase about $52,167. And then a slight increase of curriculum and professional development. So the total for this slide is $2,022,441. This next slide shows the reductions in the budget. So these two slides combined will get us close to that 1.7 million increase that we see. Last year, we had an interfund transfer. We're reducing the, the interfund transfers this year. And our principals and directors really took a look at their instructional supplies. And we are projecting a slight decrease in the instructional supplies. So netting this slide and the previous slide gets us close to the 1.7 million increase. And then the little bit of difference is spread out throughout different budget codes. So tax levy is the amount that we need to raise in taxes. That's the term that you'll see me use throughout the next few slides. And in order to determine the tax levy, we have to use a tax cap calculation. So just a reminder that the tax cap calculations based on 2% or CPI, whichever is lower. This year CPI or Consumer Price Index is 1.23%. So we use that in our calculation instead of the 2%. Another factor that comes into play with the tax cap calculation is an assessment growth factor. This is actual brick and mortar construction that increases our assessment and we're allowed to use that in the calculation. So this year it's 1.0108. This is larger than we've seen in the last couple of years. So this slide shows the beginning of our tax levy cap calculation. So what we do is we take this year's tax levy, which is currently 97,948,497. And then we add in that tax base growth factor. That is what I just spoke about in the previous slide. So that gets us to the space of 99,6341, that $41. The state allows us to take out some exemptions. So those exemptions are a net of debt service, capital expenditures, building and transportation aid. So these are our current year exemptions. And then in the next slide, we'll see that we take these out, but then we put them back in for next year's exemptions. So once we reduce those current year exemptions, we get a rate of 97,385,94. Then we multiply that by the CPI of 1.23% since we did not go over, or we did not use, do an increase in our tax levy last year from one year to the next. We do have an allowable carryover of 128,038 that we're allowed to carry over to the next year. So that gets us to a tax levy limit before exclusions of 98,36207. So that 98,36207 is at the top of the screen. And as I mentioned before, we had those exemptions we were allowed to exclude. So now we have to put those back in, but we do use 21, 22 numbers for the debt service, the building aid, transportation aid. So we have to add back in those exclusions that we took out in the previous slide. So once we add those back in, we get to tax levy with exclusions limit of 100,326,742. So this is a tax cap limit that is 2,378,245 greater than our levy is currently. So what does that mean? So if we, we are allowed to go up to 100,326,742 in our tax cap. That's a 2.43% increase from our current tax levy. What we are proposing, and we'll see this in some future slides when we talk about revenue, is to only have the tax levy propose, the tax levy will be 626,348 lower than that allowable tax levy limit. So this means that the voters, we would need only a simple majority, a simple majority is 50% of the voters plus one. If the board did decide to exceed a tax cap, we would need what's called a super majority. And that's a 60% voter approval. A few things I wanted to note that the tax cap, in addition to the tax cap, we do, we do operate under contingent budget requirements would remain in effect. Budget can only be presented two times to voters for consideration. If the vote is defeated both times, then we can only, we, we cannot exceed what the levy is currently at the 2021 rate. So for our budget, we must always balance our budget number of that 113,242,880 with sources of revenue. So this slide shows us where our other sources of revenue come from. So of course, our tax levy or our, our property taxes is the highest portion, and that represents 88.04% of our revenue. State aid is our next highest source of revenue. You can see that's the 8,29246 on the page. And that represents 7.32% of our revenue. As in previous years, we've used our committed reserves and appropriated fund balance. So that would represent 2.82% of our revenue. Finally, county sales tax would be our next highest source of revenue. And that's a 1.1% of our total revenue. You may recall in August of 2019, Westchester Sales Tax increased their percentage and the school district has seen some benefit from that increase. And then other sources of revenue make up about 0.72% of the budget. So that, that comes from interest earnings, rentals, miscellaneous expenses, health services that we bill back to other school districts and such. So you can see on this slide, it's a comparison of our other revenue sources and the tax levy. So that other revenue source is only increasing $18,303. So the rest of the the revenue is raised through the tax levy. In the next few slides, I'll talk about the tax rate. Tax rate is based on a thousand dollars of per assessed values that the taxpayers would be paying. It's a portion through our four towns, which are in our district Bedford, Lewisboro, North Salem and Pound Ridge. It's important to note that when we speak of tax rates, it is linked to the assessment values. And those are not finalized. They won't be finalized until July. And that's what, when we set our tax warrants to the town. So Bedford is showing some growth in assessment. And their tax rate would be projected to increase 5.13%. And again, that is based on the assessed value per 1,000. Lewisboro would decrease approximately 0.06%. And then North Salem and Pound Ridge, the same thing. North Salem would see a slight increase at 6.05% based on their tax rates per 1,000 assessed value and Pound Ridge, which see a slight decrease of 0.34%. Again, these are just estimates. These are the estimates that we got as of about two weeks ago of assessed values. And those are constantly changing, so they will change again before we set the levy in July. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Andrew. And I think we have a couple more slides that he will speak to.
Thank you, Donell. Thank you very much. So there's the summary slide here that the budget that we've prepared a little bit different from the past in terms of the contingency and the somewhat flexibility that's built into it to prepare us to, we hope, emerge from pandemic conditions. This provides supports, whether we're in an improved, whether we're in a socially distant environment or not, whether one is necessary or not. Provides academic supports and engagement opportunities that we think will be necessary when all students are ready to return. And it supports the district's need to reflect and learn from and either hold on to or revise the many lessons and changes of the past year. You see the dollar amounts and the percentage change again reflected there. And as we move on, we always have the two propositions. The first one is the proposition that voters would see on their ballot for the budget itself. It names the dollar amount there and gives us the authority to raise that tax levy that Donell spoke to. The next proposition, we are once again looking to replace a certain number of buses and other vehicles. We're always very careful to say that this is a proposition to give us permission in essence to use funds that already exist in this year's general fund budget. We are not asking the taxpayers for any additional funds. We simply have need to purchase buses out of this year's budget. You can see there 366 passenger buses, 230 passenger buses, 234 passenger buses, and one operations and maintenance vehicle, total of which is not to exceed 670,950. And again, those funds are available within this year's general fund. This proposition would give us permission to allocate those funds towards this purpose. And we have a number of meeting dates ahead of us. There we are at the top. We have our Saturday budget review where we'll continue going through every page of the budget. And then we have a number of dates set aside in March for continued discussion if necessary with our board. We've put a possible budget adoption date there on March 25th. We're required to do one more public budget hearing, which is a presentation very similar to the one we've given tonight with any changes that occur between now and then to the budget, but there's a state requirement that we do that hearing within a certain timeframe of the vote itself. Which you can see there this year is on May 18th. I think it's a bit too soon for us to know exactly at the moment how that budget vote will take place. We can all remember last year. It was quite different than it's ever been before. So we're not sure at this time exactly how the budget vote will take place, but we'll certainly keep the community informed. There we advertise the vote for the Board of Ed and the Board of Education election on May 18th of 2021. And I think that brings us to the end for now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Donell. Thank you, Alice. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you to our entire administrative team who's here with us tonight, not only at our virtual board table, but also to all of the administrators and staff members who are with us in the audience tonight. We really appreciate the collaborative dedicated teamwork that enabled you to bring this proposed budget tonight. We're excited that we have the opportunity tonight to just begin a preliminary conversation about the budget at a high level. And I know in a short while, we'll start to turn our attention to a few of the more detailed pages of the budget, but we do recognize the extraordinary circumstances in which not only were you developing this presentation for tonight's purposes, but more importantly, in which you're developing a budget and anticipating the needs of our students amidst great uncertainty. And thank you for helping us to understand the nature of the flexibility and contingency that you're proposing. It's very helpful for us to keep in the back of our minds as we enter into discussion. So please just allow us to express our gratitude and thanks. And we look forward to continued discussion tonight and on Saturday and throughout the month of March. Thank you. With that, I think we'll pause here for some questions about the high level presentation before we push on. Was that everybody's expectation? Yeah. Okay. It looks like Bill is ready to go. Go ahead, Bill.
Always came up with the questions three weeks ago. So it's finally my time to ask them. So one thing you mentioned was staffing around the anticipated additional support that will be needed. I'd love to hear a little bit more about either now or at a future meeting, a little bit more, like flush that out a little bit. One, one question. And then the other related question is I'm not sure I'm clear about the contingencies positions. Are there four related to class size and then four related to COVID staffing, or there's one instead of four?
I can definitely speak to that second question, Bill. The, the, there are four as there have been traditionally that are related to class size. And then we, we worked through a variety of positions to think about what positions we would need to bring additional students back to school if we were still in a remote environment. And it's, it's truthfully, it's a combination of types of different positions. Because this, this year, we happen to be using a number of interns for second spaces, but we're also using teaching assistants in second spaces. And we, we looked at a combination of those types of positions again for next year. So it's a, it's a variety of types of positions that, that we used really, really to just though, to develop a base number, a dollar amount to put in the budget that we could either put towards positions like that, or that we could put towards other types of resources, which was the first part of your question. Should maybe necessary in the fall instead.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So in terms of the additional support, what, 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 what will that look like in broad strokes?
In, in broad strokes, we're thinking additionally, you know, currently we provide, for example, RTI services to certain students who might be struggling academically. We think there might be need for a lot more of that type of support. Anticipating that students who may or may not qualify for RTI, but simply may not be where they otherwise would have been academically because of the disruptions of the past year. And we think it would be great to be able to have supports available in lots of different ways for all kinds of students. That's one type of support. The other type, some of the other types of support are more along the lines of social emotional support, which we're thinking about not just in, in sort of clinical terms, but actually perhaps in providing new opportunities. You know, we recognize that students are anxious perhaps about coming back to school. We want to create a space and a place that they would enjoy and look forward to coming in, coming back to. And that might mean creating new types of creating new types of extracurricular activities that would keep them engaged and connect feeling connected to their schools.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Rory, please.
Thank you, Marjorie. And thank you, Andrew, and everybody on the call for such a comprehensive budget and for your sort of foresight in considering contingencies. Obviously, we are in very uncertain times, as Marjorie mentioned. Back on slide 17, I know two things caught my eye. One is I'm not sure what the SC row is for Increase Miller. That doesn't appear on the other elementary schools.
It stands for special class.
Yeah, I know what that is, and thank you. And then the other item that caught my eye, and we do not have to talk about this tonight at all. And I know we have a lot of time on Saturday to talk through all these line items. But the class size in fifth grade is over 25, and I'm not sure that I know off the top of my head what we had agreed the appropriate class sizes should be, but that seems to be a little bit higher than any class size elsewhere. And I would just wonder if anyone could speak to that.
I don't know if that was at one particular school.
It was at Increase Miller on slide 17. And we can, we can take it offline and chat about it on Saturday, but
So maybe we'll come back to you with more on that on Saturday.
Thank you. And then one other, while I have the mic, one other topic, to the extent that we're proposing new buses again, and this came up last year as well. With my sustainability committee hat on, it would be really nice if we could consider electric buses and try to figure out some infrastructure to support migration to electric. And I know we are thinking about it. And there's conversations on the sustainability committee. But as long as it's on the agenda here tonight, and it is on the proposition, it would be nice to begin to think about whether we can start to transition that way. Thanks.
Sure.
While we were briefly talking about elementary enrollment, if you don't mind staying on that topic for just a moment, it was helpful to see the number of students in grades one to five who are currently fully remote. And I think it was 133 students. When I added up the number of remote students at Increase Miller, KES, and Meadow Pond, it did add up to 133. But I was expecting it to be slightly over 133 because I had imagined that we might have a class of fully remote kindergarteners, but maybe we don't have any fully remote kindergarten classes. Can you clarify that?
We do have one section of fully remote kindergarten.
Okay, so the 133 is actually grades K through five, not one through five?
Yes, that slide was one through five, but we had separated out kindergarten. And that's why I didn't show there. There's actually nine sections of fully remote classes, including that kindergarten section.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So maybe we could just add that in the future to the slide so that it is crystal clear that we do have a fully remote section of kindergarten. And then I found it very helpful to see the breakout of fully remote students at this time. I understand what you're saying, that it has been fluid throughout the year so far. So if I did the math correctly, it looks like we're at approximately 13% of our elementary students across the elementaries, although it's actually not even across the elementaries. It's pretty variable, actually, but for the elementary population, let's just call it at the moment 13%. So I did want to just touch on the comment that you made, Andrew, around at the moment, not planning for fully remote options in the fall and whether you might have any context in the region or how that's happening. But before, but before you answer, maybe I misheard you. Sorry. If you could also provide context for middle and high school, a rough back-of-the-envelope percentage of students who at the present are currently fully remote for the secondary level, it would just be helpful to have that number.
What I what I first definitely want to clarify is that we're, it's not that we're not planning for fully remote in the fall. We anticipate there might well be remote in the fall, but we just didn't want to indicate it in the slides. We didn't want to pull any numbers out and guess.
I see.
So we left, we left all of the projected enrollment in traditional classes for the fall until we started to get a sense of how things might play out and what they might look like. We just didn't want to start guessing at numbers. So I don't want anyone in the community to think that we don't anticipate. We do anticipate there may still be remote learning going on. But we don't know anything from the state as to what they may or may not allow or whether they'll even want to weigh in on the subject. But we're keeping all our options open at this point. As to the numbers, I'm hesitant to guess at the middle school and high school numbers, but we could certainly have those for you by Saturday if that's helpful.
Great. Thank you so much for clarifying. I'm sorry, I did misunderstand when we were going through the elementary slides, so I really appreciate that. I think that was all that I had on elementary enrollment right now. I don't know if anybody wanted to also ask a question about enrollment generally or, you know, take it in another direction.
I think one other thing I can add, Marjorie, it's a little bit relevant to your previous question. I'm pretty sure because we wanted to be consistent that on the left side of those columns where we showed current year, we stayed, and my colleagues will correct me if I'm misremembering this, but we've always traditionally used the beds date numbers, which is back in October. And I think we did the same thing with those remote sections to keep it consistent with the other slides. I'm pretty sure those remote sections are actually larger today than they were back on bed state.
Absolutely. They have increased.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, if you have a sense of, you know, the extent to which they've increased, when you bring the secondary numbers, just the most current accurate understanding of how many of our students are fully remote would be helpful. And I say that not so much with respect to thinking about how we're planning for next year's plan to bring students back financially, but really more just thinking even about the next few months and the opportunities that lie ahead and wanting to be sure we understand, you know, how everybody is learning at the moment. Well, my colleagues are gathering thoughts. I had one other question. It's more of a financial question about the tax levy. And maybe it's because this is the first time in a very long time that we're coming off of a 0% budget-to-budget increase. So would you mind saying just a couple more words about this allowable carryover, Donell? I think it was about $128,000.
Right. So since we had a flat levy-to-levy increase, the state does permit us, there's a calculation involved of what we we could have increased the budget or the levy by, and it's an allowable allowable portion of the levy that we can increase because we did recognize some savings to the taxpayers previously.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clarifying or comments? If not, then I think we are ready to push on to the more detailed budget review. Thank you again for the overview. We really appreciate the opportunity to reflect on the high-level big picture between now and Saturday. And then just a reminder to any community members who are waiting to ask questions or put comments in the Q and A after we turn to this next portion of the budget review, then we'll be ready for public forums. So thank you for your patience. Okay, back to you, Andrew. Thank you.
Kim's going to share her screen. Great. Thank you, Kim.
So now we begin this process of going page by page through the budget. Donell, how many pages in total are we doing tonight?
I believe, give me two seconds. Let me see, we're up to page. The pink pages, we will be going up to page 12. And then Nora Beltran will present two of the transportation pages.
Okay, thank you very much. I get to do the the first four pink pages here tonight. You see the very first one up on your screen tonight. This is the page that corresponds to Board of Education costs for the next school year. You can see here that the overall cost, if we can just scroll down to the bottom of the page, we can see that the overall costs associated with the Board of Ed are increasing by $2,200 for next year. And all of that increase, you can see just above it there is accounted for in an increase in insurance liability that we pay. And then there are some slight reductions in other lines. Otherwise, you can see the total down to bottom, which is an increase of $2,200 for the next school year. I don't know. Do I forget? Do we usually take questions on individual pages or do we just keep going and then take a break at a certain point and take questions? I think it's the latter. All right. So that's the first page. The second page is the page associated with our district clerk. Overall, here you can see at the bottom a projected increase of $363 down there at the bottom. The top half of this page is associated with the salary for the district clerk as well as a stipend for the assistant district clerk. And then on the lower half of the page, you can see that funds are budgeted for travel and conferences as well as supplies for the district clerk's office. But you see some increases, some decreases, and a total overall increase of $363 on this page. That's the district clerk page. The next page, we call this district meetings, or this is really the page that's associated with costs relative to our annual district election and budget vote. And you can see here, there is an increase of $6,665. Primarily, this increase is accounted for because of the anticipated increase in the costs of postage and shipping now that we anticipate absentee balloting. Again, some uncertainty around that, but we want to be prepared for that next year. So that accounts for the increasing costs on that page. And then I think the last of the pages that I will do is the page associated with the with my office, school superintendent. And you can see overall at the bottom, this page is decreasing by $5,462. The top half of the page is associated with salaries and connecting two salaries connected to my office. You can see a decrease there, $2,312. And then the lower half, you see funds that are associated with equipment and contract services, travel and conference. And that part of the budget is also projected to decrease by $3,150. And that accounts for the total decrease on this page of $5,462. Those are my four pages. We'll turn over to Donell.
Actually, Lisa's gonna unmute herself.
Sorry about that.
She's going to speak to the business office section of the budget.
We ask questions after each little section or like different colored when we switch sheets?
Donell, what's your preference?
Do you know, since we're at a stopping point and we're switching speakers, we can take your questions if
And I would just, and I think we've done clarifying questions in these intermediate parts and then big idea questions at the end.
Okay, so if I don't understand something now, and if it's
Right.
Why is this number here? It's later.
If you need to clarify, why is this number here, then you can ask it now. And if it's a big picture.
I'll ask it and you'll tell me if it's somewhere in here, it was interesting that, you know, one of the only increases of any significance was the liability insurance for the Board of Ed. Did we do something particularly risky last year?
No, so we work with both nicer, we work with nicer. That's our insurance reciprocal. And we've just seen a trend in increasing rates. Some of that had to do with liability of certain lawsuits being brought against districts. Wasn't intended for districts, but there was a look back period for different offenses that went back to 1950. So that caused the insurance company to have to raise their rates. And then just normal, it's, I don't know, the percentage rate off the top of my head, I think was 2% or 3% rate for projecting just just part of their regular insurance increases.
I think it was, it looked like a 6% increase for this, for just year over year.
Yeah.
If you go back to 2018, 19.
Like a 25%.
Yeah, it's like a 20% increase from 2018, 19, 21%.
I can certainly double check those numbers. So the insurance, you'll see, this is, this happens to be the board insurance. And then there's other insurance throughout, throughout the the budget documents. I actually think I speak to that on the last section tonight. So let me just take a look at mine. There's other insurance such as transportation insurance, building insurance. So some of those might increase quite significantly where others we would see drops in the insurance. But it is New York School Insurance Reciprocles. Many other school districts use it. We've been part of them for well over 18 years, if I'm remembering the dates correctly. And just projecting some increases.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not anything specific that our school district has done. They do look at our experience report. But they also look at the experience reports of the 18 other.
Okay, so we shouldn't take it personally, is what you're saying.
Right. Any other questions on those first four pages before we go into the business office function pages? So Lisa, how do you start with page, what are we on, fourth or third or five?
Five.
13, 10. Yes.
So this page is discussing the cost relative of the operations of the business office. And overall, you can see that the budget here is projected to decrease by $48,408. The top half of this page is associated with the salary for the Assistant Superintendent for Business, the School Business Administrator, a payroll and benefits coordinator, accounts payable person, a payroll clerk, a bookkeeper, and point two FT of a secretary who works between the Assistant Superintendent for Business and the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. In addition, there's approximately 67, 6750 that's budgeted for overtime and hourly wages. The lower portion, which is associated with equipment, contract services, travel and conferences, also is decreasing by $2,040. The contract services include such items as check printing, subscription, asset work appraisal, demographics, 403B administration, as well as funds for our financial advisors. We also have contract services and copiers, which includes a copy machine in the district office, any overages on that copy machine, as well as check writer equipment. Our travel and conference line is used to support attendance at various conferences, which ensure our office staff are properly trained in any and all modifications related to the business office operations. In our BOCs line, we have a subscription to the State Aid Planning Service. And our supplies just include general office supplies. On page six, is the auditing portion, which is associated with our annual audits. There are actually three different auditing entities that we deal with in the year, and this area is increasing by $1,000. We have a claims auditor that comes to the district on a weekly basis to review every disbursement before it leaves the district. The claims auditor also reviews all supporting documentation and any relevant bids to ensure that vendors are paid in accordance with agreed-upon terms. We also have an internal auditor, which conducts an annual risk assessment and works with the school district audit committee to identify any area of audit to be conducted at least one time a year, once a year. The internal auditor will review all financial policies and procedures as well as practices and test the district's internal controls. And lastly, we have our external auditors. And they review the district's annual financial statements and determine whether or not our annual statements are presented fairly and inaccurate, inaccurate representation of the district's financial position. On page seven, we have those costs that are associated with our district treasurer. This area that you will see, there's a projected increase of $863. The top half of the page is associated with the salary of the treasurer. And the lower portion, you'll see funds associated with travel and conference attendance and supplies. Next, we have purchasing. And these budgeted pages again are relative to our district purchasing agent as well as purchasing department. Overall, you can see that the budget for purchasing is projected to decrease by $637. The top half of the page is associated with the salary for our purchasing agent as well as $5,000 is budgeted for overtime, specifically generally in the summer where we have a large volume of purchasing that's conducted. The lower portion of this page, you can see funds associated with contract service services, various non-BOCs bids, which we participate in, other cooperative bids. Various non-BOSI's bids, which we participate in, other cooperative bids, advertising, legal notices for our bids and RFPs. In district mileage reimbursements as well as supplies and reference materials. That's, that's the business office portion of our budget.
I'm gonna take over from here. So this. Pink page nine speaks about legal contract administration and negotiations. This legal budget represents a decrease of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So this budget page is a difficult function to prepare. The figures can change quite significantly, as we can see in previous years. This depends on litigation brought against the district or labor matter matters, which may require the involvement of our attorney. These costs represents expenses paid to the attorney or other hearing officers, which are not covered by our insurance. For the most part, I utilize a previous two years' experience plus an estimated escalating calculated associated with hourly fees. Or retainer fees to set this budget. So the hearing officers are utilized for three different types of hearings, our special education hearing officers, our superintendent hearing officers, and then labor hearing officers. Our retainers, these are legal services for which we pay one fee and can utilize as much as we need. Our retainer covers items such as policy questions and guidance, bidding costs, contract negotiations, vendor contracts, etc. I have budgeted for a thousand dollar increase in those retainers. Other fees reimbursable attorneys, these funds are utilized to pay for non-retainer matters, excluding specialized education. Matters, labor matters which result in disciplinary hearings or attendance at superintendent's discipline hearing. Are an example of what would be billable under this category. To budget for this item, I averaged our monthly fee of approximately fifty nine hundred dollars to date for this year that I multiplied that by. Annualized it by twelve months, and that got me close to seventy thousand dollars and taken into consideration. Into this line, a decrease of five thousand dollars. So attorney fees for bond counsel, this is a specific council that represents the board of ed. If we were to do significant refinancing and borrowing. They pay, they prepare the propositions for insurance bonds or and all the necessary documents. They also review some of our annual requiring documents that we have to present to movies. And then finally, we have attorney fees for C S E litigation. These are specialized attorneys which represent the district and committees on special education matters. The combined monthly fees for special education litigation over the past sixteen months. Has amounted to just under twenty one thousand dollars, given pending litigations, I recommend an increase. To the twenty one, twenty two budget of approximately ten thousand dollars for this legal expense. And then we have had investigative services, which we haven't had to use in a number of years. So. That is a decrease. So overall, you'll see that this is a fourteen thousand, five hundred dollar decrease for legal negotiations.
So page. Of the pink pages represents the cost associated with the personnel office. The overall proposed budget for these codes for the upcoming school years, four hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty four dollars. This represents a decrease of about eighteen thousand dollars. The funds in these codes are used for the salary of the assistant superintendent for human resources. The salaries for two clerical people as well as funds for occasional hourly or overtime work for those support staff personnel. The focus of the human resources office will continue to be compliance with our collective bargaining agreements. And other H R mandates as well as improvements to our personnel practices. On the bottom of the page, you'll see there are funds designated for advertising, supplies and BOSI's fees. BOSI services include some of our mandated trainings, software that maintains employee attendance, teacher evaluation. And professional development records as well as access to the employee assistance program.
Records and management slide. So you'll see that there is no change relative to the maintenance of documents and records. We also are in the process of transferring records into digital format where permissible. So funds have been included to just continue this, this project. Public information. So the, this page is, is association with, associated with the distribution of public information. We have an increase of eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars. The district secures the services of a public information specialist through Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's. We continue to budget for this person's work at the district four days a week. Also including this cost is continued to making the website accessible to all. And the cost associated with this line is set by past experience with Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's and their projected increases. So with that, that ends our pink pages for today. So in line with what we did before, before I turn this over to Nora to talk a little bit about transportation, was there any? Overview questions on the pink pages?
Uh, this is Julia. Can you guys hear me? My headphones, I think my battery is running low. Can you still hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I can you remind me, what's the contract for the retainer for the attorney? Is that? Is that an annual contract that we sign or is that multi-year in terms of setting the price for the?
The. It's an annual, an annual contract.
So do you, I mean, I know this year because there has been so much going on with COVID and so many different. Things that the, that we've had to get sort of opinions from the attorney and terms of how to interpret. Do we sense that there'll be like a little swing up on that more than just that thousand because they've probably provided more than in. Other years or are you comfortable with that that won't really affect next year's retainer?
Well, I, I can see they had us based on the prior year's actuals. So in eighteen nineteen. The retainer was eighty one, one fifty and nineteen twenty, it was eighty two, seven seventy five. So we've budgeted eighty five thousand. I can look for Saturday to see what our actual retainer is. So sometimes when we're looking at that budget to budget, it's not actual to budget. So last year, we were projecting an increase and I'll find out for Saturday if, if the retainer is actually the eighty five. Or if it's slightly lower.
All right, and they may see it as sort of just a write-off in terms of the year has passed and they had to do extra work for their retainer that they haven't done in previous years, but. I don't know, I sometimes think they might try to recoup some of that in a subsequent year with the retainer. And even in, in anticipation of continued, you know, questions around. Practices related to, you know, all the different mandates and stuff from the government. Thanks.
Sure.
I just one quick item. I think it was Alice that presented page ten. And I just noticed that increase of five thousand, eight hundred on the recruitment and H R services line. And it seems like that's a fairly consistent year over year increase. If I'm looking at it right, and I'm just wondering, is that, or do we pay a percentage of overall BOSI's costs? Or is that specifically attributable to our district? And, and if so, what additional services are we using year over year?
So we've added an onboarding component, Rory, that we didn't use before. Where we're doing all electronic onboarding of staff. And also I wanted to put in some flexibility for Neil if he wanted to look at some additional components to add next year.
Makes sense. That makes sense. Thanks, Alice.
Sure.
Any other questions before we move on? Terrific. I think we're ready.
Nora Beltran, she is our supervisor of transportation here to speak about her budget pages. Nora?
Can you just tell us what page it is in the book?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. It's yellow page fifty three and fifty four.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Nora.
Hi, um, there are two pages. Related to transportation in the binder. Yellow page one, this page represents the cost of operating the transportation office as well as bus drivers and monitor salaries. Also included are the expenses. Associated with fuel, bus parts, tires, insurance, driver's physical, random drug screening. Contract repairs and contracted transportation. Overall, you can see the fifty five, ten budget codes are projected to increase by forty four thousand, six hundred and fourteen. Staffing in this section includes four office staff. Fifty seven, six hour drivers, three custodial part-time drivers, nine bus attendants. Contractual services for equipment repair work is work that we cannot do in-house. It's. Engine overhauls, transmission overhauls, significant body damage, work that would lay up. Our only one big bus left for too long. We're projecting a. Ten thousand, one hundred decrease in this area. Contractual, contractual and services includes expenses for our radios, which is Nycomco, which has a G P S. Our contracted transportation, which is coach buses for field trips and athletic events. Our D O T state, our New York State D O T fees and waste oil removal. Bus parts and supplies, parts and supplies used to repair our buses in-house. As mentioned, the above overall budget association, associated is projected to increase by forty four thousand, six hundred and fourteen. Page, the yellow page fifty four, this budget reflects the costs associated with our mechanics and our bus garage. As board members may know, we service our buses at K E S. There's a garage there. We staff our garage with six mechanics and one head mechanic. Our mechanics are responsible for maintaining our fleet of buses and vans as well as O N M vehicles. Each of our buses and vans are inspected by the New York State D O T inspector twice a year. We have a D O T rating of ninety eight percent. Our mechanics do a really excellent job at ensuring that our vehicles are fit. To safely transport our students. The more than one million miles we usually travel, although not this year. Overall, you can see the fifty five, thirty budget codes are projected to increase by one thousand, five hundred and thirteen. Which brings the overall budget to budget increase for transportation to forty six thousand, one hundred and twenty seven. Any questions?
So, hey Nora, it's Rory. How are you?
Okay, how are you?
Good, thanks. I'm, I'm just, as, as I'm, I'm gonna think out loud a little bit, I would have thought. Especially in light of our remote Wednesdays, that our overall cost. For transportation would be lower and we probably are burning less fuel and that, that's just my sort of rough way of thinking about it. And yet I see that we're projecting an increase. Both in bus van driver expense, which maybe is just compensation and that's fine, but also in diesel costs. Is it that the cost of the diesel is increased so much so as to. Overtake the fact that we're twenty percent down on the number of rides that we're doing, or am I not thinking about it right?
I'm, I'm, when I make this budget, I'm thinking we're gonna go right to regular transportation. There's not gonna be. Wednesdays off. We're gonna go to full five days. That's how I budgeted these pages.
Gotcha. So everything is based on, everything's back to normal.
Yes.
September. Gotcha. Okay.
Think, I think also, and Danelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Rory, in this, you're seeing this year's budgeted number, you're not seeing the actual.
Yeah, 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 you're right. That's, that's, that's what's tripping me up. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think we've seen a slight increase in, in diesel fuel as well, the cost per gallon. Although we do get a significant break using Westchester County contract services or contracted rates, but. Slight increase as, as we see as consumers at the gas station. So that's always hard to predict as well.
That's helpful. Thanks, Stella. Thank you, Nora.
And just while we're on these pages, I want to provide reassurance to a comment earlier regarding the opportunity to move forward with electric vehicles. Just to mention here in anticipation of a conversation we'll have in a couple of months that. The sustainability subcommittee will report out to the committee and part, I'm sorry, to the community rather and to the board and part of that. Reporting out will entail just our best thinking on. The landscape for electric vehicles right now for public schools in the region. And Nora and Danelle have taken a lot of time and care to help us become better educated about that landscape. So stay tuned. And there will definitely be more discussion on that in the very near future. Should we keep going?
I think those were the final pages that we were set to present for tonight. For the budget and we will continue going through the additional pages on Saturday. For all day budget session.
Just wanted to clarify, are we gonna do the recreation page or no?
Oh, was that, I'm sorry, was that scheduled?
I had that. Page fifty five?
Yeah, okay. Well, so that's a fairly. Easy budget page. So this is our budget page associated with community service. We have intermunicipal agreements with the town of Bedford. Town of Lewisboro to use our facilities for basketball and other sporting events. So we do require some custodian oversee when those events happen. But ultimately, these are netted out. So they're, they're, these are just small costs associated with those overtimes. For the building usage. We are, we are projecting a thousand dollar increase and that is at the middle school. Just over, just from what we've seen in previous years, of course, not this year. And this is taken into consideration that the, that we would be able to provide those, those spaces for the community to use.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Danelle. Any questions or comments on this last page?
Marjorie, I don't have a comment on this page specifically, but just in terms of transportation. You know, especially these last few years, I've come to really even more greatly appreciate our, our ability to have. Not just our own fleet, but our own drivers that are full-time, that are district employees, that are. Again, dedicated, committed and focused on serving our students in the district and. You know, my own children take the bus and they've been doing it since, you know, they've been capable of it. And, you know, they're always coming back and saying, oh, you know, Nick said this or, or so and so did that and, and they know them, right? And I think there's a real sense of security there and confidence. And last thing I'll say is I think. You know, our drivers have experienced a disruption in their day-to-day work as well because of COVID, right? They have to watch the students and, and are you wearing your masks? And they have to still monitor behavior and, and again, be safe. Professionals. So, you know, kudos to the whole transportation team. They probably don't get enough, you know, highlight or credit as they deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, thank you, Terrence. I know we have a very senior, retired staff, bus driver staff that seems to know a lot of our students. And the students always seem to know a lot of the bus drivers as well.
Thank you, Terrence. Thank you, Nora, for joining us. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Danelle. Thank you to everybody who was engaged in the detailed budget review. And we very much look forward to picking up where we left off on Saturday. So many thanks and we'll look forward to that. I think. That concludes our budget review and analysis for tonight. And I think that's gonna bring us to public forum if there are no further comments or questions or any instruction that you wanted to offer to us, Danell or Andrew, with respect to Saturday, or we'll just pick up where we left off.
I think it'll be more of the same, more of what we just saw.
Okay, great, then I think that does bring us to our opportunity for public forum, thanks again for your patience. And in a moment, I'll ask Kim to help us with comments or questions that have been entered in the Q and A or um sent to our public forum email address. If you are preparing to enter something in the Q and A, we ask that you please identify yourself, we're not able to read anonymous comments into the public record. And please tell us what section of the district you're from. And with that, whenever you're ready, Kim, we thank you for your help.
Thank you, Marjorie, I will first start to read the public forum comments that were submitted to the BOE public forum email. And the first is a petition signed by four hundred and fifty-seven community members regarding five-day in-person learning. Dear Mr. Selesnik and members of the Board of Education, we, the four hundred and fifty-seven undersigned parents of Katona Lewisboro School District Elementary and Middle School students, approach the district and the Board of Education requesting a return to full-time, five-day in-person learning in March, early April for all grades K through eight, early this spring, in line with many other Westchester districts and the new CDC guidelines for schools. Our students need more in-person schooling than the hybrid model allows. The hybrid model is insufficient to provide the strong foundation in reading, writing, and arithmetic that is fundamental to the future learning and performance of our elementary schools, nor provides the needed development of our middle school students to ensure a successful high school career. The hybrid and asynchronous Wednesday model has shortened the instructional time and limited interaction with teachers. This is not setting the children up for success as they progress through their education and will affect them through the entire Katona Lewisboro education. Furthermore, the amount of time our elementary and middle school students are spending online is detrimental to their development. We are also very concerned for our children's mental health. Nothing can replace in-person interaction with the teachers. In-person interaction is the best way teachers can provide students with the appropriate support and one-on-one time they need. Our students are struggling at all levels of performance. We cannot let our children slip through the many cracks of the hybrid model, especially when so many districts in Westchester are making changes and moving forward successfully with full-time learning. As you're aware, many school districts in Westchester, including Bedford, Pleasantville, Valhalla, Rye, Harrison, Scarsdale, Austin, and others are planning or looking into a full-time, five-day return for students this spring, some as early as March. This forward movement would be in addition to the districts that have already prioritized their younger learners. For examples, Somers, Byram Hills, and Chappaqua. We are requesting that Katona Lewisboro School District follow this lead, communicate the plan, and immediately return our elementary and middle school students to in-person, five-day instruction early this spring. To date, other districts have been creative with the use of space, different models for different grades, prioritizing learning for our younger, more vulnerable students while we left Lewisboro Elementary empty, didn't implement Plexiglas barriers, et cetera. We need to be more creative and forward-thinking now to not leave our students behind this school year and to maintain our status as a top school district. We firmly believe sending yet another parent-student survey will ultimately waste valuable time and will not benefit the decision-making dialogue at this point. The recently issued CDC guidelines allow for a reduction in the six-foot spacing within a classroom while maintaining safety. Adhering to this new guidance will allow Katona Lewisboro to return all students who want to, not only full-time in the building, but full-time with their teacher. For even those who attend four days but split classrooms, this will be a huge benefit to the physi- to be physically in the same room as the teacher all day. It is imperative imperative that this, that the district work within this new guidance and bring all children who want to be back into school while maintaining remote learning options for those who prefer to keep their children out of school. We appreciate the hard work the district and the board has done in this unprecedented year. You have sought to improve the experience and understand the needs of the students in this ever-changing situation. Understanding student needs allowed you to open sport for the high school. Please apply that same understanding, implement creative, forward-thinking solutions to return our elementary and middle school students in full-time this spring. And the next public forum comment to the email is from Derek DeCintio. I write these questions as a concerned father of an elementary-level student in KES. Please address the following in the BOE meeting tonight. One, the C- latest CDC guidelines indicate that schools in low and moderate transmission communities open for full in-person instruction while maintaining physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. Other local school districts have already released plans to return elementary-level students back in the classroom full-time. What steps is our district taking to get students back into the classroom five days a week? Private and religious schools have already brought back students for full in-person learning. Two, please explain to parents and taxpayer taxpayers as to why Wednesdays are not being utilized for in-person learning at any grade level. Twenty percent of the school week is being used as asynchronous learning, which is inefficient. This is not acceptable to students, parents, and taxpayers of a top school district. Three, I assume the district has been in communication with the teachers' union in regards to reopening our schools in full. Please share the content of those communications, what are their concerns and or demands? Now I will go to the Q and A comments. And this is from Geraldine Zickley, KESPTO. I appreciate that the Department of Health guidance has not changed. Related to this, first, the Assembly Representative put out a statement emphasizing that the Department of Health believes there is flexibility in current guidance and some districts are looking to reduce distance in some cases. However, some districts have also asked the community to advocate to their elected officials and even facilitated by putting out letters or even placing a form letter on the district's website. Our community can advocate as well. The next comment is from Nicole Simmons. First of all, thank you all so much for your tireless and offered, often unappreciated work. As a veteran high school teacher and mother of two young elementary students at KES, I ask that you please very seriously and promptly act to be, bring elementary students back four to five days a week in school. Although instruction is much better than what was provided to students from March to June of last year, it is still not the same and many students are not meeting benchmarks. My question is, when will parents be surveyed in regards to how they feel about bringing their kids back for more days? Many districts have already sent out surveys and begun to orchestrate phases that begin on March first. Please don't let our kids fall behind, thank you for, again, for your time tonight. And that is all of the public forum comments that were submitted.
Thank you so much, Kim, for your assistance with reading the comments. And thank you very much to members of our community for um entering thoughts and comments tonight and for submitting um comments and your petition earlier today to our public forum email. Um, I should have mentioned right before public forum that we're not going to engage in a back-and-forth at this moment. Um, we don't really engage in back-and-forth at the meeting, but please do be reassured that in just a minute after we move our way through the consent agenda, we will have opportunity for board dialogue. And I'm sure that we will have um some thoughts and uh comments that we wish to share in response to all that we heard. We really appreciate you sharing your perspective with us and um imparting a sense of urgency around um your need for in-person learning um and mobilizing to share that sentiment with us via your petition. Um, so with that, I think we are gonna now move forward to the consent agenda. Just clarifying, Kim, that that's the close of public forum, we don't have anything else at this time. Okay, so this brings us to um at eleven point oh one now, which is the consent agenda without item twelve point oh six, because we already had the opportunity to vote on that one resolution to appoint the new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Could I ask somebody to please move the consent agenda apart from twelve point oh six? Thank you, Julia, and seconded by Liz, thank you very much. Um, is there any further discussion or any clarifying questions on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, we can vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, terrific, thank you, seven zero. And that brings us to fourteen point oh one, which is an opportunity to recognize a generous donation um that actually we approved at a previous meeting. And we are just clarifying that previously uh we had stipulated the amount of the annual scholarship, which was twenty-five hundred dollars, whereas the uh scholarship endowment, so to speak, in its entirety is ten thousand dollars. So would somebody please move this resolution for fourteen point oh one? Thank you, Rory, and would somebody second it? Thank you, Julia, so please therefore be it resolved that the board acknowledges with thanks and accepts the corrective monetary amount and the amount of ten thousand dollars from Richard Talmage and Art, for the Arthur and Dorothy Talmage Memorial Scholarship. Thank you very, very much, and we can please vote on that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, terrific, thank you. And that brings us um to board dialogue and discussion. And uh I'll allow my board colleagues to gather thoughts or consider whether you've brought any other topics to board dialogue for tonight. And while you're doing that, I'll just start by mentioning with regard to some of the comments we heard this evening and also that were imparted to us through the petition. I, I guess I just wanna start by mentioning that I think there's so much that we can all agree on here. Um, I'm thinking here about the reality that nothing can replace in-person interaction, um that we wanna be involved in a decision-making dialogue, that it's imperative that we be working within the new guidance that has um been prepared for us, and that we all want creative and forward-looking solutions. Maybe we have differences of opinion as to whether we've already been creative and forward-looking, but please be assured, we want to be as creative and forward-thinking as we possibly can to bring students back into school. I fully recognize there's much complexity to also discuss here this evening. Um, and I think we can maybe provide some context and clarification around um what we're doing and our timeline for engaging the community. And also even some clarification in terms of um the locus of decision-making and um the, the guidance, or the letter, I should say, that the Assemblyman prepared. Um, and that was referenced in the remarks, so I will stop there and just, you know, allow for somebody else to um share a thought or comment and then happy to circle back.
I mean, I, 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 I think that the community reflected almost our exact thoughts, right? We, as you said, Marjorie, we, we, we want what, what the community wants. We're all community members and everybody wants to return to in-person learning just as quickly as we possibly can. But we also must do it in the, in the safest way possible. And we really do need appropriate guidelines from the Department of Health to allow us to go below six feet. And you know, I think our current stance is, is a, is a stance of waiting to get the, the guidance or for the guidance to change. But, but nobody, I think more than us, want to A, be creative and B, get our, get our kids back into the school buildings in front of their teachers as quickly as possible.
I, I appreciate that, Rory, and if I can just add to what you're saying. Just today, earlier today, Chris Verdic met with us and with some uh board colleagues from other neighboring districts that he represents. And he um, he really engaged us in very thoughtful conversation about this moment with respect to opportunity to bring more students for in-person learning. But he emphasized that it is envisioned that this is going to be decision-making that involves conversation among parents, teachers, the county, and the Board of Health. And among that nexus of um, you know, municipal representatives and agents of decision-making, um, you know, some magical consensus or um safe plan is supposed to emerge. And uh, I guess in a sense, you get what you ask for. And this is um a very unique opportunity for local control to some extent, but also a very frustrating moment for school districts that are trying their best to figure out A, whether the state is going to agree with the CDC with respect to this being a moment to allow for some flexibility and going down to three feet, and that's one question. And then B, whether that's really sufficient um in order for districts like ours to be able to move forward with additional in-person learning. So um, you know, I, I welcome your thoughts, Andrew, if you would like to speak to some extent about a timeline. I think I'm hearing other comments that we may also want to address separately around asynchronous Wednesdays. But I think in all of this, um, you know, mostly what we're hearing is urgency around the need for in-person instruction. And if you can share your thoughts, that'd be very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, please, I'd, I'd like to, and, and, and I wanna echo what a couple of you already said, you know, that we couldn't agree more with the majority of, of the sentiments expressed and nor with the urgency about wanting to get all of our students back as quickly as possible. I do wanna clarify though uh about the guidance. The CDC offers some flexibility. The CDC is the one that's suggesting depending on rates of transmission in community, you could have different mitig- uh, you could use different mitigation strategies. But remember, we don't follow this, as, as odd as this might sound, we're not obligated to follow the CDC guidance. We follow that, we have to follow the New York State guidance. And New York State hasn't, uh, the New York State's position has been that it's already in line, it feels it's already in line with the CDC guidance. But I also wanna clarify, we don't need to wait for the guidance to change from New York State, because the guidance already allows us to go below six feet so long as we use what they call barriers. So in New York State, the guidance has always been you can be closer than six feet if you have barriers in place. And that's what districts, some districts are now starting to look at more closely, because it's really the only option. If you wanna bring more students back in and you're willing to go less than six feet, uh, you, you have to think about barriers, so that's what some districts are now thinking about. And we are, you know, we're, we're joining them in that process of investigating and understanding how that works, what impact it has educationally, costs, et cetera, we are looking at those things. And it's, uh, you know, there, there's some, some incongruity in the guidance, because the CDC guidance suggests that six feet is still ideal. They ask you to think about the rates of transmission. It's not entirely transparent to us what the rates of transmission are in our communities. We know the numbers are going down and that's good news. We also know that Westchester County numbers have generally been higher than some other parts of the country. So it's, it's hard for us, you know, we don't have the expertise to know. Uh, and, and again, New York State doesn't ask us to have the expertise, it says to us, we can go below six feet. If we choose to, we just have to have those barriers. So that's what we're now looking at, that's, and that's, uh, we heard, uh, we heard, and I think it might have been in the survey, I think we might have heard a request not to go back out to the community. But then we heard another community member tonight ask, when are we gonna go back out to the community? And so I wanna clarify, we will be going back out to the community to ask for more input, because that, that information, the community members can give us about their thoughts and their intentions. And as Marjorie has just pointed out, that's, that is a necessary part of the conversation. Not just because our legislators ask us to be engaged with our communities, but because at certain point, we'll need to know what families intend to do, because those numbers will then help us to see what we can in fact do. And so we will be asking those questions in the coming weeks. I hope I've said that all clearly enough, if I haven't, please ask me questions so I can clarify further. And then, and then I do wanna speak to one other question that I heard in the uh public forum tonight, which was related to our teachers' union. And I wanna be really clear in saying how teachers' union is not making demands. We, we have a very collaborative relationship with our teachers, we are working together. We, we have a very collaborative relationship with our teachers. We are working together. To understand the guidance and to understand how to implement it as best we can. We all, we all have a shared desire to bring students back as quickly as possible, as safely as possible. So we, we work together on that. It's, it's not a matter of what are the demands of one group or another group.
And Andrew, I would extend that to our other units as well. That they are working with us to be, you know, solution oriented and to figure out how to make this work best for our students.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you for that context, Andrew. I would just add something that you yourself had mentioned at the beginning of the conversation, which is that. Or I'm sorry, the beginning of our meeting, which is that in addition to the survey and I fully understand the. Helpfulness of the survey, but that you are also inviting conversation, future conversation as soon as next week on this very topic. So even though tonight. I'm sure we'll feel unsatisfying to those community members who either are with us or who signed this petition. I think it is helpful to provide that reassurance that you are. Creating a forum for conversation on this topic in addition to the survey, because I do think that, you know, one thing we can take away from the petition is that it's. You know, it's, it's a, a signal from the community that. People want to be able to share their thoughts, I think, in ways other than just in the survey.
Sure.
And so we appreciate that you're making yourself available for that. And we invite community members to please be on the lookout for that invitation, which I'm sure will be going out soon. We really are navigating this together as a community. We're trying to make the best decisions possible based on science and based on our. Truly shared goal of wanting to bring students into school as safely as possible. So I guess I would like to just provide the reassurance message received and. Please know that even though we're not in a position to solve it tonight, we are actively working on it, all of us here at this table and other administrators and staff members who are in the audience. And also that we're trying to, of course. Make our hybrid learning model and our remote learning experiences the very best that they can be for all students in the meantime. And so we appreciate feedback on that as well. Were there any other thoughts or comments? Catherine, were you waiting to speak, please?
Clarifying question. Is the New York State Department of Health saying it either must be six feet or it must be barriers? It's, it's either or?
Yes.
Okay. And I have two other things. In the petition, it was mentioned that other districts, neighboring districts are talking about exactly what we're talking about right now. Do you know if any of those districts have made decisions?
There, I, I know of, I know of one or two that have gotten as far as decisions. None of them, none of them have made changes that are already in effect, but let me try to be clear on that one also. As I said at the beginning, I think there are some districts that since September, you know, through the fortune of their spaces and their staffing have had some more students. Interestingly, and probably not surprisingly, it's the, it's the districts that haven't been able to achieve. More students than we have. It's the ones that have been bringing back either fewer students or bringing them back in, in different ways than we've been doing it, not as, not as regularly as we've been doing it. That are pushing the, 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 the most quick, the fastest to get students back into school. So a district, for example. That hasn't even been able to bring in kindergarten and first grade is on a faster timeline to now bring its students back perhaps at less distance. Whereas the dis- the school districts that are actually have been able to bring more students back, like say K six, and they've been able to do that all year. You may not see much transition from them right now. They may stay, they may stay put and stay it. And if they're able to do it at six foot distance, which they are, if they're, if they've been doing it up until now. That means they were able to do it at six foot distance. They're likely, from what I'm hearing, to stay that way moving forward.
Please allow me to just underscore what you're saying, Andrew, because even in this conversation with Chris Verdic today. There were districts represented in that very call and there were not that many of us, but that fell into the categories that Andrew just described. I have a district in mind that literally said. Yes, we're making steps, we're taking steps as quickly as we can. And then he said to bring K through two. In full time because their K through two has not been able to be in full time. And another district that was there that I know well. Has had K through six in full time for quite some time because they had significant declining enrollment for a long period of time. But hadn't made changes to their infrastructure or their setup. So they, they came to them pandemic. They, they, they brought to the pandemic. A lot of space and the ability to bring kids in, more students in every day. So those, those districts are, you know, right here. Represented by the same assemblyman. And then there's Cotonawessboro and obviously. We're somewhere in the middle.
I, I guess I just, I asked that question simply because, and Andrew, through this, you said, please, let's try not to compare ourselves to other districts. And I recognize. The importance of that. So I try to remind the community about that, but I do also know how difficult. It would be if our neighboring districts do choose something different than us. How? How in sync are you with other superintendents in our neighboring districts? And what do you think the likelihood is that? You guys will make a decision sort of. Similar, and I'm talking about really our neighboring ones, not, you know, I mean, you know, I'm talking about North Salem and Somers and Fox Lane because I just think that that will cause. More difficulties if they decide something differently than we do. Does that make sense?
I, yeah, I, I think we're certainly very much in sync in that we, you know. I was, I was in on Zoom today with all of the eighteen, but in the Westchester districts, they are our most immediate neighbors. And we were all talking about. What our options are, what's available to us. And it, and it, there is still some variability. Because in some cases, the size of the district, you know, North, North Salem is a, is quite a different school district. Than we are and just, just geographically in terms of size, in terms of enrollment, et cetera. So they may have some options that are simply different than ours. And they're, they're, they've made some, some changes recently as a result. But I think on the whole, I think we will generally be in sync. I think every, everybody is trying to think through, how do we? Make the best of this experience that we can and what opportunities do the next couple of months hold for us, assuming. Assuming. Positivity rates continue declining. Assuming vaccine opportunities continue increasing, you know, assuming those things continue. And assuming the guidance doesn't change for the worse and only changes if at all for the better or stays the same. What we're all thinking, what can we do to get our students back in as soon as we can? And it, it may look slightly different from one place to the next, but all with the same intentions.
And one more question, sorry. A couple of weeks ago, this might be for Mary, but I know for a couple of weeks ago, we sent out a survey, which was optional to our teachers. To ask whether they had been vaccinated or set up an appointment. Could we, you know, there's concern for our teachers. We want to make sure they're safe. Can we send out another survey? I don't, I just don't remember. How many weeks ago that was? Can we redo that to see?
I can, I can speak to that, Catherine. And it's a, it's an interesting example of how challenging things are at the moment. On, I want to get my days straight. I think it was on Monday night, pretty late on Monday night of this week, Governor Cuomo issued an executive order. That said, effective Tuesday, school districts were required to report. The number of teachers who had been vaccinated to New York State. This set off, as you can imagine, some scrambling around the state as we all tried to figure out. How do we gather that information and how do we report it? And we, we did start to begin to try to gather it. It wasn't clear to us whether the state really meant just teachers or all people who work in schools. Why would they ask for just teachers? So we started. And, and within 24 hours, we had another statement from the state that said, this, this is now on pause. School district will not be required to submit the information. We'll get back to you soon. And we're not quite sure why that happened. I, I did hear some discussion among superintendents today. It might be that it ran into some. Some HIPAA regulation. It might be that it simply wasn't feasible in the way they first configured it. I'd like to think it was well-intentioned. I'd like to think with a lot of hope that the state was realizing we really need to prioritize. Getting vaccines to schools. And so I'd like to think maybe we'll see. Maybe we'll, we, maybe that will come back in the next few days, but that just to give a sense of how things. Continue to sort of fluctuate up and down as, as the state and all local officials try to think through. How do we figure this out together and get ourselves moving forward? And sometimes it goes and fits and starts, but. The intentions I would, I would like to believe are all good.
Thank you, Andrew.
Sure.
So I do, I just want to recognize for all of us the challenge that this year is for our students, our. All of our staff and schools and their families. And I think it's important for people to be engaged and give us feedback and share. You know, both their appreciation and their frustrations. And it's really, you know, helpful for us to hear it. But I think I, I just feel like to reflect back to the community, just how much I know. To repeat what everyone has said, this really is our goal as well. We were in such agreement. The only thing I just want to highlight is in some of the comments and in the petition, there's language like falling behind and not meeting benchmarks. And I just think our kids are under tremendous stress already and under pressure. And while I do. Very much appreciate that concern about potentially falling behind or. Not meeting what last year's benchmark was this year. I really. Want to just encourage all of us to think about the fact that, and Andrew, you said this really eloquently a couple of meetings ago, but. We're all living in a global pandemic. You know, five hundred thousand people have died and kids are really stressed. And I think. Them getting through this year with some resilience and some successes and some challenges. Is the most important thing. And I'm not saying I want to put aside our, our objective goals for them to really be learning and engaged and accomplishing things and learning new skills. But I worry about using those kinds of words and that kind of language when kids are already so stressed. I think if they hear parents having those kind of conversations and using that kind of language, I just worry that it makes them feel worse. And so. I just really want to encourage all of us to be careful about how we talk about this. And, you know, these kids are living through something that none of us have experienced. And. I think, you know, overall, the goal is to really have them, you know, do as well as they can and then look for opportunities to help them. Catch up if they, if they have in fact fallen behind. But again, I just. I, it makes me, I guess, sad to worry that we're looking at our kids through that type of lens during a time like this. So. Again, that's not in any way to say we don't want to hear about frustrations or concerns or fears. But I just want to encourage people to sort of look at that through the lens of everything that they have accomplished, just getting through a year like this is pretty remarkable. And if in fact academically, there are some deficits, I don't want to ignore them or pretend that we shouldn't be really concerned or focused on them, but. I just think keeping everything in context is really important.
Thank you, Julia. Please forgive me for this clumsy segue on what you're saying, but. You remind me that in this past week or since our board last met, there's also been new information related to. The lack of a blanket waiver on state testing. And I'm not sure, Andrew, whether tonight's the night to just update the board on what's happening regionally. Or whether your superintendent colleagues are planning to band together to petition for a waiver or whether we're not petitioning for a waiver. And again, maybe this is premature. But if it is, then I wonder what is the timeline for helping our community understand what's happening?
I can't speak to that. Thank you, Marjorie. So. It's, it's, I, I don't think there'll be any petitioning for a waiver. I think that moment has passed. So what we've heard from the federal government is that New York State, I don't think any other states will be granted a waiver. From the state tests, but there, but there are some concessions. The state tests won't have any accountability status this year, so they won't be, schools won't be judged negatively in any way based on the outcomes of those schools. Individual teachers. Won't be judged and students won't be judged on the outcome. So they'll, they'll simply be to sort of see how we're doing. But then. There, what's entirely undecided is the form that the test will take. And that's where the states have been given, I think, some leeway and, and we don't know anything more on that. I believe there's going to be a meeting of the Board of Regents on March fifteenth and sixteenth. At which time I think they're hoping to make some decisions around the three through eight state tests. There, there's, there's a wide variability of possibility, every, everything from they could happen this spring to they could happen next fall, as we've, we've actually heard. But I, I put that out there very hesitantly. We, we really don't know. Hopefully we'll know more on the fifteenth and sixteenth. It doesn't seem though that there, it, it does seem that going to happen one way or another. We just don't know in what form. We don't know when. And the other piece of that is related to the Regents exams. It does seem that New York State will only. Give administer the, those that are absolutely required, which are the English and the math. And I think it's the science is the third one. Mary, do you know? I think it's science.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Right. So New York State won't go beyond what the federal government is requiring in terms of high school state tests. But that's all we know for now. There's a lot more to be determined as to, as to how they'll be administered and when.
Thank you. Any other topics or comments, thoughts? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. I think this brings us to sixteen point oh one, which is our look ahead to future meetings. And as has been mentioned earlier, we're going to meet again on Saturday. At eight thirty in the morning. By Zoom.
Remotely, yeah, purely by.
Yes, correct. And then again, Thursday, March fourth, seven thirty P M. The Sustainability Committee is meeting Friday, March fifth at eight fifteen in the morning. The Board will meet again Thursday, March eleventh, seven thirty P M. Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, March sixteenth, seven P M. The Board will meet again Thursday, March eighteenth, seven thirty P M. And then again, March twenty fifth, seven thirty P M. And policy is scheduled to meet Friday, March twenty sixth at nine A M. I think that brings us through the month of March unless I missed anything. Nope. Okay. Then would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Moved by Bill. Thank you. Seconded by Julia. Thank you. Again, Andrew, Mary, Alice, now. And colleagues who are with us via attendance in Zoom. We really appreciate all that went into the budget. Development process and the presentation this evening. We look forward to seeing you again on Saturday and thank you so much. Please be safe and we can vote to adjourn. All in favor.
Aye.
Terrific. Seven zero. Thanks so much, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Good night. Thank you.
Bye Sawyer.
Good night.